Three.
Nice.
In four.
He don't tell me.
We're three of us. Yeah, Scott still. We want to do one after way out there toward California. Mr. President, we're ready.
All right, we'll take so.
It's a good slower when it gets colder.
Big time.
Winter is good.
I saw you earlier.
Yeah, I didn't get a chance to. You guys have a good time?
Yes, well. I saw your name on the.
See.
I am winning. Oh, I did win. I bid on something.
No, just on the list. We're setting up that money.
Oh, yeah. Fire nice.
Oh, yeah. That's fun.
Gail won the big guy.
Would she win?
She won a grizzly cooler, a big one, and then five dollar gift cards. Yeah, she was a big winner. It was big grizzly, and that one good big. Nice.
You'd like that.
So. We'll see many.
This is overrated. The soup at that last one, so when we had the big mast boat. Then I forgot to put her up. Bathroom or something, garbage, something like that, and everybody heard. Can you picture for me?
Yeah. I knew they were there. All right, we're gonna go ahead and get the meeting started here at six o'clock. Um, first off, we need to open the public hearing for this school calendar. Gail.
I have not been speaking any oral or written comments. Um, Stacy or anybody want to talk about what the calendar is similar to or?
Yeah, so basically, um, the calendar committee met and the pretty much the structure of the calendar is very similar to this, the twenty-one, twenty-two calendar. Staff liked the Monday full days for professional development, so there are a few early dismissals just for some other things like conferences and things like that, but otherwise, the we had great feedback about two weeks at Christmas, but we did kind of change the format of what the two weeks look like, just based on the way the Christmas day felt. So you can kind of see that, but otherwise, everything was pretty similar.
Awesome. Thank you very much. Any other public input?
Can I just jump in here for just a second?
All right, I am gonna go ahead and adjourn. Oh, Dr. T is, oh, forgot about you, Dr. T.
That's okay. Good evening, everyone. Happy Valentine's Day to all of you. Um, I just want to add that a couple of things is that we did take a staff survey to get input for the calendar, which we had a great result from that. And also, I wanted to thank Vic Vanderpool, who's our new HR Director of HR and Special Projects, led that committee. So we had a good cross-section of people on the committee, a great result from teachers to come up with this result. Thank you.
Thanks, Christine. Anything else? All right.
Are we just on the the calendar?
Yep, right now we are. Yep, open a regular meeting. I'll go ahead and adjourn the public hearing on the school calendar, and then I'm gonna go ahead and call to order the regular meeting set for tonight. Gail, roll call.
Josh.
Sure.
Alex, absent. Alex?
Here.
Jeff?
Yep.
Andrew?
Yep. Do I have approval on the agenda?
So moved.
Second by Alex. Any further discussion? All those in favor?
All right.
Opposed? Generally passed? Okay, now we are in the public forum, and I believe John Kinley, is that you're here to speak tonight in the public forum? All right, go right, go right ahead. You can come over here if you want to speak at the table.
Honorable. Thank you.
No problem.
Um, John Kinley, retired superintendent from the district. Don't know very many of you at the table, other than Jeff anymore, but anyway, I haven't followed very carefully. I know on your agenda tonight, you have a topic on enrollment. I haven't followed the direction the district has been going with that recently, but I wanted to take a moment or two to offer some thoughts about tweaking whatever you might consider with the open enrollment matrix. And I wrote these down so that I wouldn't wander tonight, so. First of all, the district has demonstrated an ability to grow steadily over a significant period of time. That growth has been manageable and fueled by the district's continued ability to provide a top-quality education and great opportunities for students. I'm confident that growth will continue as long as the district continues to provide an excellent education for its students. Enrollment growth requires additional facilities to accommodate that growth. Building additional facilities requires the support of the community to make that happen. Gilbert, Gilbert District has one of the higher tax bases in the state of Iowa, and its primary foundation has been through residential property. Our patrons have gone to the polls time again overwhelmingly supported the package to bond issues, provide the facilities that we now enjoy. I want to remind the board that families opening only into the district do not pay taxes to support those bond issues. I spoke to one of our, my neighbors this morning, who informed me that her son and family are building a house in the district because they want to be in this district, but they couldn't get in because of open enrollment. That's a difficult decision for people to make, but those are decisions that they need to make. You would know this better than I, but I'm guessing that we've had some students who've been open enrolled out of Gilbert to neighboring districts, but having found that the grass isn't greener have or will elect to return to their district residence. And finally, I would encourage the board to use caution in making adjustments to the open enrollment matrix. It is easy to open the door seeking additional growth, and if it comes quickly, you can find the dynamics of the district also change quickly, and sometimes that's not always for the better. Thank you for that.
Thanks, John.
Thanks, John. Public forum, anyone else? Did you want to speak, Jim?
Oh.
Yeah, I know you, I mean, normally just go ahead and email Gail ahead of time so we have a little bit of heads up, but if you're here, you can go right ahead and speak if you want.
Okay. Um, I've got some handouts for you, get it. I was gonna talk about the, just kind of get the buzz going on, the intermediate school stadium over here. The track is obviously heaving and falling apart. Liability insurance issue with kids getting injured. The poles fell down, one fell down during the Rachel on the north side. The north side lights have been out for years now. It's got a transformer in the northeast corner that's leaking PCBs and oil, which is endangering the students as well. So one of the proposals that I'm making is to shift all that over since most of the work, well, all the work that has to be done on this stand to to get it back up to par has to be redone is to move it over to the middle school up to the northeast corner there. As I, it's a little hard to read, it's kind of pretty basic, but it's a to the northeast corner with a parking lot in front of that to house all the middle school sports that are now walking over here through the parking lots to go to football, to soccer, both boys and girls soccer and the referees. It's always hard to find parking around here for all that activity in the evenings and gets all congested. And I think that would be a brighter way goes our funds instead of just trying to put band-aid on something that's already gone right here. This could be utilized on my next sheet. Uh, we're, we're, we're having traffic problems all the time, but Amy did a great job this afternoon of of experimenting with a new traffic pattern, and we did it again last week with a turning lane coming off the main road here. So one of the solutions would be to expand the Gretton in between both schools and add a turning lane. The, the road is wide enough for most of it, and I proposed this to the city last week, but they said they'd come to you guys. The options to do with the traffic, but we need your support to get a turning lane on Gretton to get that traffic off of Matthews and to relieve the congestion out on the main roads, not only for safety vehicles. And this is the turning lane. Let's see, right here. There should be a graphic right here of the distance that we need. There's about three feet of cement just in the middle. For some reason, that road was not built in a uniform width. It actually looks like a woman's waist in the center there, and that's where the three feet need to be expanded to get three lanes in there and have a turning lane going into the middle school to relieve the traffic. Either way, with Amy's pattern today of going, bringing the traffic in towards the school bar and trying to get it off the road, we still get congestion because you have to go left or right, and if there are a bunch of people that need to go right, they're all stuck and backs up into the circle. So if we can get any kind of support with you guys, with the city, they, they recommended on Facebook to me that I should contact with you guys. Okay. We, we, we. Yes. Um, we did do a trial run with cones last week, and I think getting it back, it went really smoothly. And everybody's giving a thumbs up. So it's especially visiting Wednesdays, it's one of the days when people are getting dropped off for sports. I think it'll also help us out in evenings when we're, we have multiple sports going on here and at the middle school. The, the, the other one I showed you there is another possible use of the stadium if we were to move it over to the middle school for the middle school sports to be at, but actual middle school would be to bring entrance off the northeast end of the stadium, blacktop the old track for pickup and deliveries and have the kids come out there and use the old sheds that are out here, the concession stands for shelter for the faculty as well as the students. That would be another idea of getting it off the, off the streets.
All right, Jeff, thank you very much for this. Like I said, there's a lot to dig in here, so we appreciate it. Not bad on the time side, so. Anything else for public forum? All right, we're gonna jump right into oral reports. Christine, announcement celebrations.
Yes, as I said, good evening. I, I believe we have, hold on, I'm trying to navigate here. Yeah, our high school program, are they there? Our Tiger.
Oh, yeah, they're here.
Okay, good. So we should have some students, both from the high school and the intermediate school there to share with you a big celebration that they would like to tell you about, so I'll let them take it away.
Awesome.
Perfect. Guys, you wanna come on up? Yeah. I have experts here to talk with you and share some great things that have been happening between intermediate and the high school since about October, and we're gonna start with Kylie Sanduca. She is our teaching fourth grade this year at the intermediate school. It's her first year teaching, but she's been to the district now for ten years. Prior to that, she was the associate here in our library. I'm lucky to have her now as a classroom teacher, but she came to me with an idea. And I'm gonna just let you take it over because this was your idea, and then between Mrs. Baffert and I, we were able to make it happen, and then we'll let the kid share with you. So go ahead, Ken.
Okay, well, as a first-year teacher, like I, I found that I was working with students and I wanted to be able to meet all the students' needs, and they all have different needs. I teach math and science, and I said, I came to Amy and I said, is there any way that we could get some high schoolers or somebody to come in to just do small groups? Like, we would say, you know, assist someone with this or play games over here with them, those kinds of things. And then she, it was great. She took it from there, and it's, it's been wonderful. I think I've had maybe seven or eight high schoolers come through my room, but like three that have been constant, you know, friendly faces for my students. I work with a three-way switch, and they really a lot go to these students, and it's just, it's been great. Not only that, but they also, it's like these high schoolers, sometimes I, I think that they, they love to come to the classroom. They like to feel needed and wanted and to be able to help people, and, and some of them are students that never thought that they could help students before, so it's, it's been just wonderful. I love it.
Okay, so I've got three fourth graders that agreed to come share with you and are really nervous, but we had lunch together today and practiced, and I told them, there's nothing they can do to mess up. So which fourth grader would like to go first?
Um, hello, I'm Deborah Oviedo, and my parents are in O耶. I'm in fourth grade and it's a huge class, and when Liz comes into our class, I was like excited, and they're always like, yay, Liz is here. Um, and I sometimes see some people like out, some of the high schoolers outside of school. Um, I saw, I don't, I don't remember which high school it was, but I'm someone at Target, and I said hi, and it was really fun seeing them like outside of school. Yeah.
Thank you, Deborah.
Hi. Hello, my name is Myra Griffin, and my parents are in Griffin, Pat Griffin. Um, I like when high school helpers come because they always like keep us confidence if we say that we can't do anything. You're not can. And I would definitely help because like Deborah said, it's really exciting, like when Liz comes, if everybody looks at us.
Good evening. I am Cooper Sisson. My parents are Jake and Jeff Sisson. I'm in fourth grade in Mississippi youth class. I like when Liz comes into our room. She's, she's helpful and kind. I consider the high school helpers my friends and glad they can help.
Great job, fourth graders. And so I had two high school helpers, two of the twenty-six high schoolers come in the fall semester. They have the option to come during the study hall period, and so they just check out the high school and come in and check in at the intermediate school. Um, so far this spring, we've had almost twenty high schoolers come. So Liz and Zuzu have agreed to share with you a little bit about why they chose to do this and why they chose to come back to do it. So one of you want to take it away?
My name is Sirgai Sanfica, but I usually go with Sue now, just give it a try, and so.
He used to go with Zuzu when he's here. Okay, okay.
Sorry, of course, I've gone with you here of the fall and a little bit during the spring. This year as well, but so, yeah, I mean, if you work in small groups, help them out, stuff like that, and then it's been really fun, and we've been helping, of course. Yeah, I'm sort of saying to would be like, so if I would do a like map game, stuff like that, maybe like cards, activities that we would do, and so then we'd help like maybe some groups or maybe like, like the whole class, like maybe once a person, like go around the class and help with them, so the students. I would help students and stuff makes science class, so maybe if there was like, maybe like marbles or magnets or how certain things work in science, so I would sometimes have work, so, so things upward. Sometimes I would help one ones with students, which was really nice because I can personally help the student and kind of help them through. I wanted to stay from the answer, of course, but I was just that guy, literally. You are on the spot, you're going, or it's right patterns like that, something like that, and then I guess before I got with groups, so that was really fun. Because I'm, those, you know, um, bunch of bench work builder, and I could help, like, yeah, help them, so, but something's out, get things through, something like that. I got to know students as well, so it's kind of familiar, so I think I know a little bit about them. A few of them, at least, you know, it's kind of pretty nice that they could come up and ask me questions because they probably felt a little more comfortable with each other and high schooler. That's pretty much.
Thank you. Okay, so like they said earlier, I'm Liz, and I'm a junior at the high school. And originally, when Mrs. Griffin sent out the email of volunteer, I was more than excited, but I never thought that these kids would have such a large impact in my life. I began going over there anytime I could to help Miss Brown's class, which is how I met these three, and in the afternoons where I was able to form so many good connections with students. I worked with them on many different things, such as assignments, or if they have questions, and they were able to share their projects in progress with me, and I was able to help Miss Brown if she needed anything also. When we were faced with one of the hardest days in our district, November eighth, I desired a different type of comfort than most of my peers. Once I found out about Nolan, I immediately had to leave class. I was walking through the hallways when I met Mr. Danison and Mrs. Griffin, and I remember saying to them that all I wanted to do was be with the fourth graders that I've grown so close to. I think this can really show. I lost my spot, hold on. This can really show others how important the connection can be between a high schooler and the intermediate kids and how it can benefit both parties. A second semester goes on, and I have a more demanding school schedule. I still do my best to try and see the kids as often as possible. It truly has become one of the things that I look forward to throughout my week, and I know they do too. When Mrs. Griffin asked me to share my experiences with the kids, I was honored. I was able to choose a couple of them to speak today, even though it was hard to pick just three. I chose Cooper because of his gearing heart and expressive personality. Cooper was one of the kids I grew closest to in such a short amount of time, as I worked with him more than others. As time went on, I met more people in the class, which is where Deborah comes in. Dad is one of the sweetest girls who would do anything for anyone. I got to learn how each kid in the class prefers to learn and how I connect with each of them. I also chose Mallory because she's one of the strongest girls I know. She is so good at sticking to what she knows is right and exceeding expectations. I'm so luckily lucky to get to know these individuals and have the relationship that I do with them.
Liz, what's your last name?
Fierce.
Great last name. Great job, kids, fourth graders, high schoolers, everybody involved. Thank you guys so much for coming. You all did awesome. That's a great, great program, so.
President Rick Liff, if I may, I just want to thank all those students and the staff for putting that together. That came from our listening tour where we talked about ways that our schools can be more connected and our students can be more connected, and I'm really grateful to the staff to put that together, to come up with the idea and for the kids to be so excited and to take it to that level. So thank you to everyone involved, and you can hear their excitement. I don't need to say anymore, so thank you.
All right, now from that, any other announcement celebrations, Christine, that you have on your plate?
No, that takes care of it for today. There's a lot of wonderful things going on in Gilbert. We had our kids go and do all kinds of things in music and in speech and the honor choir and the honor band and all kinds of great stuff. So be reading your newsletters that come out because there are good things happening all the time in Gilbert. That's just one we wanted to highlight today.
Right, thank you. All right, now on to admin reports. I'll turn it back over to you again, Christine.
Okay, on your agenda, the admin report, hold on, just a second. Um, the first thing we have is the return to learn COVID update. As you can see, our COVID numbers have been dipping compared to where they were a couple of weeks ago, so we're grateful to that. But there's two pieces that I think that we need to consider tonight or talk about. One is the governor has stated that they're no longer going to report the state of Iowa or the county numbers for COVID. Um, I guess my question to the board is, do you want us to continue to report the numbers within our district? We, if you recall, the dashboard has our COVID numbers as they've been reported, and then also just our illness numbers as it comes in. We can continue to report that. It just wouldn't have the state and county percentages on it because of the that's being changed at the state level, so that's one question I have. And then the second piece to that is the notifying of parents. We continue to notify parents if there's been an exposure in the classroom with a letter or an email that goes out, and a lot of districts are no longer doing that. We have no problem continuing to do that if that helps parents keep a closer eye on their kids, that's fine, but I just wanted your input on those two pieces.
I guess I'll open up to the board quick, everybody's thoughts on both the letter to the parents and also just to keep that website we have today that keeps the number of COVID cases and also mentioned earlier, the positivity rate for both the story and Boone County will no longer be reported because the state's going away with that, but.
So we track how many people hit it a day?
Yes, we do report that out by building. We do, we say the number of students in each building and the number of staff.
But I mean, do we have any idea how many people are going to that site looking at it every day? Do we have a number like, do we have known any hits we're getting?
No, we haven't been, I mean, I can tell you just that a month ago, we had a lot of people looking at it, and now we don't have as many people looking at it. I'm not gonna say always looking at it.
Right, right, right.
But not what we had before.
Carrie, what's, I assume, just, I think you are the one behind the numbers. How much time do you put into?
It doesn't, I mean, that part, it takes a little bit, but not that much time. I mean, I can tell you that, you know, like Dr. Tridio said, I mean, right after the holidays, we really started spiking, and I think today, our absentee rate was in the two percent range, so I mean, it has really come down to from where it was.
President, here's a COVID dashboard.
Okay.
I like it. We use it. I know other families that do. I mean, I, to me, it would be how much of a burden on the staff to visit. Because if some people like it and it doesn't really take anything to do it, then it's helpful. I also lean to, I mean, data, if, if we're taking the data in, might as well collect it. You never know when you might want it.
And we do keep track of the absentee percentage rate. We have a spreadsheet that we just keep that in, and we've done it. We're on degree three now, I think, so.
But it's absentee for everything, not just COVID.
No, it's illness absentee.
Right.
Not just COVID.
Right. COVID numbers by building.
It's interesting, just. There's now flu, you know, and things like that.
No, you're exactly right, and I mean, we don't know, I mean, in our illness, last year, we did keep track of COVID illness versus any illness. This year, we just won't do that, so. But it's, if, if, it's not that, it is not a time to do that.
What about the letter, Josh? I mean, your thoughts on the letter going out to parents too, what you said on that?
I, for me personally, it affects whether or not we go see a grandparent with cancer. So we'll adjust our travel plans based on that, even though it may not necessarily be anything. That's a personal story. I can't speak for everybody else in the district. Again, I, if it doesn't take much to do it, I think it's helpful, and otherwise, yeah.
Alex, what's your thoughts?
Um, like Josh mentioned, if the resources need to keep it going low, and some parents are finding it helpful, I'll see, and they can continually collect that, and people want to utilize it, can utilize it. I'll see, and then constantly collect that and people that want to utilize it, can utilize it. It does, I'm on the same page, notification to, we're gonna plug them dashboard.
Yeah, I'm just afraid this is the way life is. I mean, you know, I don't have any time finishing it for the rest of the year, but I think we should all be. We should all probably be realistic enough to know this is probably the way life is. And so I think we should finish it till the end of the year and then we revisit it next year, maybe.
I think we're all agree, I would agree. I think we're, that, I, number one thing is if you ever tell me you're spending hour and a half every day, get rid of the darn thing, but. It's part of the process now. You've got it down to the science. I mean, you've been doing it now for most of the school year. I mean, if people want to check it again, they don't, they don't have to. So Christine, I think we're okay. We'll just go ahead and keep moving forward what we're doing now and then we can revisit it here at the end of the school year.
That sounds great. We, uh, have a great system already in place, so we'll keep that going. And I think more information is always good for our families. So we're happy to keep that going. So thank you for that discussion.
Organizational chart, I think, you can talk on this, Vic.
Yeah. If you look at the animated sheet in front of you there. On one side is the kind of a quick snapshot of each building, just to kind of get a general idea of. The grade serves, number of staff members, number of students, and then kind of the organizational structure within the building. And if you flip over to the other side, you can look at it from a district standpoint. So if you start from the school board down to the superintendent. And then down to a, the, uh, building leaders and directors. And then it kind of just gets a snapshot of each. Uh, director's position and then kind of what their roles are within that. We thought that it would not only be good to make sure that we understand everyone's roles in our system, but also people looking out and looking in. Could, could be able to kind of see who is responsible for, for different parts of, uh, of things within the system. Any questions? No?
I know you've just kind of given into this fairly new with this and I'm sure you're digging deep now. I'm just curious, cause I, um, you know, Dr., um, talked to Dr. Trillo about it before and I know. We're, we're learning the district, right? And kind of getting some of these admin positions that we've needed for a while. Um, two things that I've seen are very important organizationally. I'm a nerd Al and everybody, but you have unity of command, right? Which is you have one boss and then you have effective span of control, which ideally would be between three and five people. In general, what's the scorecard on the district administratively? How close do we get to that? Are we like, yeah, we're doing great? Or no, like there's a few areas where we get. Someone struggling to manage 20 different people.
Yeah, yeah. And if, if you look at that, each of those directors levels positions has kind of what they do. And then under each of those people, there are several people that do report directly to them. I would think the largest groups, group of people that oversees the largest number of people probably are director of transportation. He has several drivers. Uh, director of, uh, maintenance and grounds, they have several employees who need that. But I wouldn't say it's out of what is a normal range of people who supervise within the district. Um, could future structure change that and tighten that a little bit? Absolutely. But everybody else within that. Um, you know, just have a handful of people that they either supervise or order, uh, monitor. So I think it's well within, within current range. Now, as our district grows, we're definitely going to need to look at how we might restructure that a little bit. Um, but at current capacity, we're running a time. Does that answer your question?
Yeah, that's good.
And if I may, we can, um, I know Jason, you're working on it. We've got a technical difficulty here. Um, but I just want to mention to, um, our new board members. Um, I don't believe you were on the board when I gave out our first org chart. If you remember to our other board members, it was a kind of a real, um, basic org chart and we just keep making it better. And that's really what you have in front of you and we'll continue to modify it and change it, um, as we make changes.
What difficulties are we having? Just, is it just video?
Just video.
Okay, sound still there, just not video?
Yeah, you guys can, I think you guys can hear us and see us. We just can't see you, but we're okay.
Okay, that's probably better. You don't want to see us, so. Um, anything else on the org chart at all to do?
Well, just, uh, it started out with the cabinet levels, so not to do a lot of cabinets meeting, I kind of had each of the directors. List kind of what their primary, primary responsibilities were. And then I helped meet with each one of them and kind of drill it down to be more specific. Um, there's lots and lots of things that each of us do that aren't included on there. We tried to pare it down to the things that we're most directly responsible for. So people that have a kind of clear understanding of what everybody's roles are, so. Thank you.
All right, on to board reports. Um, I'm gonna, first thing we have on the topic is the RFP. For facilities, master planning services. Um, I know Jeff, you and Tyler.
Yep.
Met and I discussed, uh, review the RFP. I think the RFP is in everyone's documents. Uh, I'm a viewer, uh, Christine want to hit on that quick. I'll just kind of give us an update where we're at and then maybe talk about timeline. Since Tyler's not here.
You're me, boss.
Yeah, I can jump in and then, um, finish it up there, Jeff. So, um. So what you have in front of you is a sample RFP. It's draft, maybe not sample, a draft is a better word. Any, as you review it, excuse me, anything can be changed. Um, I will tell you that we used a model that Tyler brought forward to put this together. Also, um, I did some research on other RFPs that are out there. It's a pretty standard RFP. And most of them are. Um, I added a few lines about, um, making sure they collaborate with our groups. That do enrollment, that do facilities such as de novo that we're going to hear from tonight to make sure that's included. Um, however, what's not in the RFP is as far as, uh, finalizing our dates. What, uh, the dates that we wanted to roll out, the dates we wanted to, uh, come in. We'll have to make those decisions and that might be a, another meeting. And so Jeff, I'll, if you have anything else you want to add, that's all I have for that tonight.
Oh, that's perfect. Uh, I, I guess the thing I, I, when, when I was reading this, uh. The thing I noticed I was really shocked about from the time you start this to the time you get done with it, the whole process is like 45 days. And so it goes pretty quick. And so, um, once we select this, we move forward. Um, it'll happen quicker than everybody thinks. I think that's the only thing I was really shocked about. I think the information's great and, and moving forward. And they do, and they do give us another, uh, they do another student count for us too, like we use issues. Tips us, we get it, we get another, we get another, uh, look at that from another different source. So looks that are. Our student counts through a different eye, in which right now is obviously pretty important to what's going on. So we'll get another look at that. So.
And again, this is just a, this RFP to be to hire a firm to come and do the facilities master planning again, where we sit today with future growth. What's of the, if we do decide to go and do another, what's priority look like in regards to facilities and everything else? Both in the short term and the long-term planning standpoint. So again, no action tonight on this. We just wanted you to see the RFP. Um, but again, this will move, as Jeff mentioned, it's going to move pretty quick once we start to pull that RFP out. So I, my guess recommendation is everybody kind of go through that document. Any questions that you think are topics are missing in there, let us know or let, I would say let Jeff or Tyler know.
Tyler's kind of leading this chart. He's just not here tonight.
So Tyler's been through this a few times already.
And I think, I think the hope was, um, that. We would get feedback and continue to add to it and maybe be able to vote on it. Uh, with the dates and everything by the next meeting, which is March 7th. That was the conversation.
Perfect.
And that vote would just to be to put it out for bid, right?
Correct. We would agree on the dates when everything would go out. Um, we would agree on the content, which is pretty much all there. We just didn't put the dates in yet. So we need to agree on the dates.
Right.
Now we're in a, in a work, in a study work session.
Oh, how competitive are these? Probably, I mean, we, we expect them two or three, you know, firms to come forward or.
Oh, we'd like that. No, we'd like two or three, but you know, it's the, you know, you're going to get architectural firms to bid it. So you know, you're probably going to get. Ayla's probably going to do it and then you'll probably get, uh, DLR, they've done a lot of work here for us and the Pats. You know, might get a look from somebody else. But that's kind of what I think who, who we're probably going to get looking at it.
Generally fairly local.
Yeah, you know, I don't know. I guess maybe, you know, as, as our school gets bigger and our projects get bigger. Local means, it means just the state or does it mean just the Midwest? And, and so it's kind of something that we have to change our mindset and you know. Local, when you got one building's local. Local, when you got a campus like we do now, might be the Midwest.
Yeah.
So. Yeah, I don't know. I don't know the answer.
Any other questions on that? We're going to go ahead, then Patrick and turn it over to you or, uh, facilities.
Thank you, everyone, for having me tonight and I'm excited to share the documents that are. Here in front of you, the. There's three different pieces that we'll talk about briefly tonight. And the first one we'll go through is. A survey we did that talked about the outdoor learning space. And that was a piece that came from what Christine had asked and about as it relates to the educational foundation. The second piece will be the comfort and function study. That was a survey sent out at the same time to all staff to get feedback. And then we'll give you a very high level look into what to expect from the facility assessment that we've done. And then hopefully get into, uh, get into more detail with, with the work session. So we'll take a look at the outdoor learning, one of the smaller booklet. I'll just give you a really. General overview of how it's put together and what's in here and then let you guys take a look and, and read through all the comments. So it's broken up into each one of the buildings, starting with the elementary school, then the intermediate, then middle school and high school. And for each of these, the question that was asked was if an outdoor learning space were available at X school, would you use it? So then we identify how many people said yes and no. So for example, at the elementary school, 24 responses. 19 people said yes and five said no. So this is particularly teachers and I don't think there were any administrators that. Or maybe one administrator that responded. So then below that, I talk about what amenities it would include. And most of the respondents talked about picnic tables, seating, shade. And as it relates to the picnic tables and seating, one of the pieces that stood out to me was. One of the respondents said, I would picture having it having open spaces for multiple classes to be able to meet. There could be benches for small tables for students to work at or space for them to sit on the ground. So then if you flip the page, another additional comment, allow for both whole group, small group and individual work. And then we asked where it should be located and staff indicated there were a couple of different locations where it would make a lot of sense. Nice, nice and close to the building and there's opportunity for trees and shade there. And then on the next page, show a handful of pictures about what that could look like. And so for example, different level seating, hands-on learning. Can supplies can be integrated into the structures, own for program flexibility in that environment. So. That's the general idea of how this is set up and that'll go through each one of the buildings. Give you some ideas of what they're thinking about and how that can, how that changes as it moves from educate, from the. Elementary le- level to the high school level. Any questions about that piece?
You're just going to have to give us some time to read all this. Yeah, it's hard to show up the day of and sure, give you any opinion on it.
No, and.
Yeah, I told Patrick too, before he started, I said, hey, just kind of go real top level on all this stuff, because we're going to all deep dive into this. And we'll come back in the next 30 days probably or less and then really come with questions and everything else. So that's kind of what I told him before it started.
Right.
Cause I, I'm the same way. I love to absorb it all and I come with questions and I just told Patrick, I'm going to go high level tonight and then we'll come back with some more questions later.
So then the next booklet for you to take and digest is the comfort study. And it's broken up the same way. So starting with the elementary school, going through the different buildings and. It gives a good visual of. What, what the staff was thinking as far as and what the questions were. So the first question was. My, does a space meet my needs? And for example, at the elementary school on, on page three, that graph shows that 12 said yes. Three said they strongly agreed. Seven said they disagreed and two said that they strongly disagreed. So. Then you get all the comments following that. So for example, storage was one thing that was a big issue. To meet the teachers' needs. And another thing was that somebody noted was they have a lot of blackboards and chalkboards, which they don't use a lot. So that was just one thing that pops out that says, oh, this is a way that the teachers are using the space, something that they would need to help. Help the educational learning environment and help improve it for the teachers and for the students. One thing that stood out through the survey through all buildings was the question of I feel safe and secure. Or do I feel safe and secure on school grounds? So on, on page seven, you can see there that eight people strongly agreed and 16 agreed. And there were no people that disagreed or strongly disagreed. So that was pretty consistent throughout. Is it safe that most staff felt really safe on school grounds? Other questions included. The indoor gathering spaces such as the gym cafeteria, do they meet, do they meet our needs? Does do the outdoor playgrounds and fields meet our needs? So those, that's the type of feedback that we are getting throughout this survey.
How, how, how did you decide how many responses or how many people participated in your study?
How did we decide?
Yeah.
The, that was the data we got back.
So you sent everybody, you sent to all staff?
Yeah, it went to, it went to every staff member. Then we, when we sent it out, they each had an individual link to the building. So we knew exactly. How many from each building?
Have you guys seen this? Okay.
Not that, you guys haven't seen the results.
I, if I may, um, sorry, this is Dr. Trillo. I, um.
Hey, we know who you are.
Sorry, I, sorry. Anyway, I'm not sure I know who I am. Um, I met with Patrick last week and he reviewed all of this. So I have seen it, just so you're aware.
Those are the first two. And then we'll move into the other stack of stuff that. Stack of the assessment documents that you'll be getting more in-depth into in our work session. So the goal of an assessment that you guys said, hey, we need to start looking at our facilities. What's, what's the goal here? And the goal of doing that was to establish a baseline of what you have, understanding what that Polaroid snapshot looks like. And then figuring out how to go from there, improve what you have. And then that's going to lead you into the next step of doing this master plan. So here's where we are today, giving some feedback. So what we base our assessment off of is what I call a facility. Condition index. So that number is a decimal point number. Basically gives you an idea of the stuff that you need to do versus what the building is potential replacement value. So that gives you a good idea. So that gives you a good idea and a consistent baseline to know if a building is healthy, if it's not healthy, if you're. How much you're gonna have to put in over a longer period of time or not. So one of these reports that we can get is called an asset detail report and I will clearly show. At the very top, what, what the condition is of that building. So as we get into a little bit of this, the. The detail is going to be at a pretty high level and. The, the priorities have not yet been established. So they've been established based on how we would look at that as an assessment team, based on. Architects and engineers, not on how the district wants to operate, how the district wants to spend money. So the next step at the work session is to identify what, what things are important that we've identified because there might be. Certain things that you think need to happen in year one or need to happen in year three. And we said, it needed to happen. In year five or six. So that gives the district an opportunity to, to bring their feedback in. And then any of the costs that are associated with this are still super, super high level. So it'll give you, start to give you a target of where that sits, but it's. You're not gonna be able to go and get a, get a bid off of that right now. So this just to start to, to. Put that into focus as far as what types of things can be taken care of. So the first page on the top that requirements cross tab report. So the first, first piece here gives you an idea of what the different systems are within the building that we looked at. And then based on our opinion, what that, where those need to fit in over a five-year period. And then a full cost as it relates to each one of the buildings. So each one of the stapled pieces is a different, is a different building. So the one on top was the elementary school. So then the next graph. That you see there. Shows it a little bit differently as far as what those systems are. The year that it could go and then the cost associated with it. The technical thing that. It's able to show is what that looks like over a 20-year period. So. The graph with the orange. And then another piece that can go into that is including inflation. So we're not just looking at it today or what the cost of replacing that today would be, but. How does, how do we look at those things that need to get replaced in five, 10, 15 years? And. If you wait to replace something, it's understanding how much more it's gonna cost to do that.
What is the renewal requirement versus non-renewal requirement?
So. When we're inputting the data, there is an opportunity for, so it goes at a system level. So the. Let's just say the mechanical system. So we put in, this is, this is what's here. This is it. And then if the system itself is at the end of its useful life, it would be a renewal requirement. But if there's something on site that we saw, the diffuser's broken or something like that. We can kind of pull that apart and say, this is something that we saw on site that we would recommend you take care of or at least look at. So that's the difference between those two.
So it's essentially a repair replace type?
Hmm.
Okay. So like at the, the intermediate school, you get 2023, you got 870 under the renewal requirements. Or 95 under the non-renewal requirements. Are you saying there's an option of which one we choose there or?
There, it's just the way, it's just the way that it's shown. There, I wouldn't put a whole lot of, of weight on if it's a renewal or if it's a non-renewal. Because the way that we look at that from a priority standpoint would be the same. So.
So this must be done, your, this is recommended and this is recommended.
At this point, yeah.
It's not itemized now. That's just the confusion I think I'm having. So I'm not saying it should be. I'm trying to understand it.
They don't need to be, I guess.
Yeah.
Yeah, they all kind of fill into a, fall into a bucket of these are items that. We would recommend you take a look at and put into some sort of plan to either to, to get that replaced or fixed.
Okay.
For example, in the elementary school, if you go to the last portion of that, which is that asset detail report. It then gives you a little bit more information as far as what the name of that requirement is. The category is. What, what it falls under as far as is it at the end of its lifecycle? Isn't it, is it an accessibility problem? Is it something that could be a technological improvement? Or could this, could this potentially be a reliability problem such as a crack in a wall or something like that? So then the next step in this is. Breaking it down even further into giving deeper descriptions. So you're just seeing the pretty high level stuff. There's not much meat in this. And it's just to give you an idea of the types of things that we are seeing. So for example, at the elementary school, a couple that I'll, I'll highlight the, the upper left here, the chalkboards. Their teachers aren't really using them. They're, the projectors are just. The projector marker boards or the marker boards that the projectors are projecting onto are just over the top of them. And so. We've seen in a lot of places, those just, those end up getting replaced and used so that they're not just getting covered up by the teachers and they can do something different with them. The second one here, the, the drainage at the front of the school. That's something that we probably want to take a look at because it's probably a pretty good slipping hazard in the winter. And then the third one, which I'm sure a lot of the board is interested in understanding potentially why the. Mechanical is an issue that after spending money on it. So what we found was that. They replaced a good chunk of the system. And the rest of the system didn't need replaced at the time. So that it's the heat pumps. So on page. Four, the last one or the second to last one on the bottom, the heat pump system renewal. So that shows that. They replaced a lot of the equipment, all the rooftop units, but they didn't replace those heat pumps that are above the ceiling. And at the time when they did the project, it probably didn't need, those didn't be done and those are starting to fail. They're starting to have condensate. Come through the ceilings and some of the seals are starting to break. So that's just one thing that needed to happen a little bit further down the road than when it did happen. So that's causing issues with temperatures within the classrooms. So. All things at the intermediate school. Out on the back of the gym over here, a lot of water is. Can't see it cooling in our parking lot. And the concrete is starting to dip there. So the water is sitting there. And then I think feeding back into the basement that's right underneath where the locker rooms are. So that's something that needs to get taken care of as far as the site drainage. Lot of window seals are coming, coming out. That's something that needs to get taken care of and then flooring in the, in the hallways. At the middle school, something that popped out pretty good. There's a. There's a lot of efflorescence. So a lot of moisture is coming in that window and door openings. That needs investigating. I don't know how to fix it. But that's something that you want to take care of to make sure that we're not getting a lot of moisture in the building. And then another simple thing, this, this little picture here. You can see light coming through the door, just a simple gasket stuff. And then. A lot of the window sills are taking on a lot of moisture. And then a lot of the seals are cracking and a lot of the window panes being replaced. So. There's some moisture issues that need a little bit more in depth looking into at the middle school. Then at the high school, there were a couple of other envelope. Items. So on the original part of the building where there's this kind of sucker looking ethos finish. It appears that they caulked the bottom of that. So if you look at the profile, it kind of bows out at the bottom. Not letting moisture. Out of that wall system. So that would need looked at and I believe this system should still be under warranty since you're still under 10 years. So doing that quickly is something we need to.
Middle school is under 10 years, isn't it?
Yeah.
No?
Or 10 years.
And then the curtain wall right at the. Wait room, the. Something suspect is happening there as far as where the sill hits and getting water back in. So those are some high, high level, just things that we saw right away. So.
So the only question I have left for you in my book is where do you come up with your values? What do you use? A square footage cost built today? Or how do you come up with those?
So it's built in with, so there's a, a costing tool. Say tool, it's called RS means. So that's what, what contractors use for estimating and using and getting those dollar amounts for a project. So. When we put in a specific items that we saw, we can then use those line items to get the costing with it.
So you use the same thing somebody's gonna bid it with?
Hmm. So and then there, there are items in here that are just a dollar per square. That, that do have that level of, of costing with it. Not, not a whole lot, but when it comes to something like. A restroom renovation, we're not gonna, we're not gonna go into that level of detail to comb through and to do that. So. A couple of different ways of doing it, but. That, that's what we tie it to. Yep.
And there's potentially some things in there like door seals and window seals that is priced as a higher now that building maintenance.
Oh, well, well, yeah, and that's what this is for.
So it's a generous number essentially.
Yeah, yeah, yeah. So it, yeah, and all, any of these items that come out of this are meant for. You guys to take back and prioritize. And then from there, figure out, oh, this could be part of a larger project. This, these are things that our in-house staff can take care of and from, from there, we can then go. If we keep, because we can keep adding detail to this and keep that, keep a history log of what has happened, what. You know, what things are coming up and then use that as a. A mechanism to help budget for maintenance. So. Ongoing every year or every six months, say, hey, how much, what should we be doing? What are we doing? So it's a, it's a good look ahead, look behind ability. So it's not just, here's your report. Thank you.
Okay.
Any other questions for Patrick?
This will be online. This will be, will this be posted so everybody can get a copy of this to look at it?
You're gonna send me an electronic here.
Yeah.
So I want these guys to make sure they get a copy of. Jim and.
I guess we'll have more questions for you. So I mean.
Oh, yeah. And this isn't.
Yeah. We'll be in contact this afternoon at another meeting. Kind of use the follow-up questions because I got some questions too, but we could be here all night. So. I just said, I said, I think this will be good for us. I know Josh is gonna go through this tonight. But thanks, Patrick.
Yeah, thank you very much. Very nice document. Not necessarily what we wanted to read, but very nice document.
All right, old business. We have the second reading with the possible waiver, third reading. On the graduation requirements, which Vic about, man, it seemed like a year ago, Kevin spoke on that. Just kind of changing your core diploma, just updating our graduation requirements. I know we had a lot of questions at the time on that. So. You will see your document that updated policies reflect those changes. Does anyone have any questions?
I'll make a motion to approve.
Second. Further discussion? And I assume you want to wave the third reading?
Please.
Okay, same with you, Josh?
Yep.
Right, further discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? All right, motion passed. Now construction update and I don't think Sam's here.
Sam is not here.
Yeah.
Hi, I'm Lyle Marwitt, Simple Architecture. Um, last month, we discussed, started discussing the approval or review of the bike path. Project. And there were some questions about the additional grading that was recommended. And it turns out that that additional grading, the cost was included. In that cost opinion that Scott Williams from Fox had provided. That was still under the original cost opinion that story construction had. Kind of stated at the beginning of the project. So. And that takes into account using the sub pile of dirt that the. District has at hand.
Christine, you have any other comments on that or anything on your end?
Uh, no, I. Uh, we heard from Sam last time in regards to that total amount should include. That grading piece and we're still, and I believe that also included the dirt, right? So we were gonna use the dirt at the end. Does she have? Uh, yeah, there was a lot of discussion about the dirt. I think we got that all straightened out. So I think.
We did have, we did have a question. I remember that if we could use that.
Yeah. So the number, so the original cost opinion from Madame Popish was $75,000. And the cost estimate that. Fox Engineering put together was a little over 74,000 and that included the grading, but not the dirt. It included, it included kind of like the labor for it, uh, using the dirt that the district had provided. If you want to. Get dirt from elsewhere. The budget would increase by about $5,000 and that is just kind of a design budget. It would all depend on what the thing.
Can we use our dirt?
And that, that was the question.
Yes, we, we can use our dirt.
Exactly.
Yes. We, we did confirm that the dirt is available and can be used.
That's what I was. There's a lot of different kinds of dirt.
Yes, it's not Arizona dirt.
That's right. Good Iowa dirt. It is ready to go.
I just love Christine's the dirt expert.
Grass and dirt.
Yeah. Any other questions, comments on that? Do we have a motion to approve?
So moved.
Further discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? All right, motion passed. We're gonna use our dirt. We're gonna go like that.
Thank you for coming. I scared, I scared Sam off. I'll be nicer to you.
You can't scare me. Thank you so much.
Yeah, thanks for everything.
All right, next item we have on there is a, consider approval for the Gilbert High School Spanish Department to make a trip to Spain. And again, I think they spoke at the last meeting and you'll see a full document in our handout tonight.
Let's get a motion. I'll make a motion to approve. Are you guys all okay with this? I mean.
Yes.
I mean, where, everything's good to go with it?
No, really, really they need the approval early because it takes about a year to start making planning. So they're not talking until June of 2023. So, yeah. Yeah, and they made this trip multiple times.
Okay, if you guys are good, I'm.
COVID things will make sure that. I think it's, I think it's fine. You gotta get the ball rolling now.
Yeah, yeah. As long as you guys are good, I'm good.
Any other discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed?
I was for a second, I'm sorry.
Alex.
Alex is second, sorry about that.
Josh is taking the night off.
Yeah.
I did one. I said here.
Okay, that counts.
All right, next item, which is a, a bit of a, I want to chew on here is to discuss actions regarding open enrollment and the matrix and. With Dr. Trujillo not being here tonight and not feeling well.
I think we have the district calendar.
Oh, sorry, sorry. I skipped right ahead of that. Let's go ahead. We'll go back step. District calendar. Do we have a motion to approve the 2022-23 district school calendar as discussed earlier tonight?
Second.
Second, Alex's motion, second, Jeff. Further discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? All right, motion passed. Now we're on to the open enrollment and the matrix discussion.
It's 7:05.
Oh. So I'm gonna move ahead?
Yeah, can we get Travis in first?
Yep, get Travis in.
And then.
So we're gonna jump pretty much down to F right now.
Yes.
Travis, you got an update on our bonds?
Uh, yes, I do.
Good news?
Uh, yeah, good news. Uh, given what's happening in the market, yes, I'd classify it as, uh, as good news right now. I think I'm, I have the ability to share my screen, so I'm gonna attempt to do that, to go over a presentation packet that I put together for Gail. Maybe you already have a copy of this. Um, so in, in summary, uh, and I'll walk through more of the details. Uh, you'll have a couple, uh, agenda items that you'll be addressing tonight. Um, you know, the first is, you know, consideration of the bids and then a resolution directing the sale and then a resolution authorizing the call of your 2011 bonds, which are your, your high school bonds. Um, as we look at the overall market today, um, you received uh, five bids on your, or six bids on your, what was it, five or six? Sorry. It was, uh, six bids on your financing, excuse me. Um, and your lowest bid produced, uh, refinancing savings of $702,863 of future debt cost. So the, the bonds that are being refinanced were the, the 2011 bonds, which were part of the original high school bond referendum. That was 11.1 million. The call date on these bonds is this upcoming June 1st. And so you're able to do a current refinancing of those bonds as long as you close, uh, no greater than 90 days, um, from the call date. So outstanding right now is $8,245,000 of debt. You haven't done any prepayment on those bonds and those bonds mature in 2031. Uh, the average rate on the outstanding bonds is rate at, uh, 3.25%. So as we look at then your, uh, you know, final, you know, refinancing estimate is its final. Um, we're looking at an average rate of 1.69. If you, if you back into the, the true interest rate, which becomes what you award on, it's a 1.81%. Um, and this is what produces the 702,000 of savings and you're saving roughly 43.5% of the remaining interest cost on the debt. Um, so as we kind of work through the remaining action items, um, you do, tonight would be your approval of the sale. Your issuance resolution actually is, uh, is an early March action item. And then in early April, you would look at closing on the bond refinancing. And then the bonds would be paid off on June 1st. Um, some of the details that then show up on the following pages of the packet. And whoops, this is flipped. Oh, of course, I, I pulled in the wrong bid summary. I would do that. Sorry about that. Oh, it was one of those days. Again, like I said, I did think you had five proposals. I was second guessing myself. So I was showing you the bid summary from last year, um, not to rub any salt in the wound. But, um, you know, this year, five bids, uh, Northland, DA Davidson, Stiefel, Robert W. Baird and Keybank. Uh, rates ranging from 1.81, 1.88, 1.97 and 1.98, and then Keybank at 2.38. So not really very close to the other proposals. Um, the, the purchaser of the bonds is paying you a premium. So that's why at the end of the day, you'll end up issuing 7,985,000 of bonds after the resizing. Um, and that allows you to, uh, you know, move forward with enough proceeds to complete the refinancing. So now if I go into the, the summary, um, you can see some of the details on the savings. If you really wanted to walk through that. You know, one of the things that you are accomplishing with this refinancing is accelerating your payments to 405 in the first year. That's one thing I think that is interesting as you guys look ahead towards your next round of projects. Um, in, in the middle of this page here is an estimated levy rate. You know, you'll be at 405 this year and you can see right now you've got some, uh, nice capacity within your 405 levy to keep prepaying some of your debt and shortening some of your outstanding debt or as you consider, you know, what might be your next project, the ability to complete projects without increasing the property taxes. Uh, so, so overall, a lot of good news today. Um, you know, if we look at an analysis that we've been doing for the past year, uh, which included, you know, where would savings be? If, you know, rates remain the same from last spring to this spring. And then what would happen if we went forward with what we'd call a taxable advance refinancing, um, which we knew was costly. It's issuing taxable instead of tax exempt bonds and it's doing an escrow account. And so as we continue to, to process through this and make evaluation dates, uh, you did outperform, uh, any indication that a taxable advance refunding, uh, would have been a, a more favorable refinancing option. In other words, uh, waiting paid off. Um, you, you didn't save as much as if rates hadn't changed since last spring, which should be obvious. Uh, but you did, uh, save, uh, more than you would have saved if you would have done a taxable advance refund. Um, so overall, a, a nice result, um, for the district today. And at this point, I know that was a little bit rapid fire, uh, but are there any questions right now, um, regarding the, the financing that will be approved?
Questions from anyone?
No, that's exactly what we wanted to.
Yeah, good news.
Yeah, I, I should, I should mention that your bond rating, uh, was affirmed, um, at the AA minus level, uh, which is a, is a nice rating for a district of your size. Um, obviously they've seen some of the value, uh, that your long range financing has provided you and kind of evaluating, you know, when you need to add cash reserve, uh, when you can let it, let the cash reserve go and not levy as much cash. And so they've, you've developed a good deal of trust, I think, with the rating agency regarding, uh, your projections, uh, being something that they can rely upon. So it was nice to see the continuation of that, uh, double A minus rating.
Good news, Travis.
Yeah. So I don't know if you're, if you're at your action items or if they're later in your agenda.
They're later, but not too much later.
Okay. So I'm just gonna give you a, a real brief overview here quick, just so you know, um, what, what you're adopting as you, as you go forward. There's, there's three things that is, was listed on the items to include in the agenda. And the, the first component that we just did was consideration of the sealed bids open and reviewed. Um, so that process does not require an additional resolution or action item. Uh, that is, given at one o'clock, you receive those bids. Part of that, uh, item that they gave us was to, uh, bring those bids before you. So that was in the form of the bid summary, um, which I, I need to resend you obviously. Um, and then you'll have a resolution directing the sale, uh, that locks in your interest rates tonight. Um, at these levels, and this does require a roll call vote. The resolution authorizing the redemption of the outstanding bonds then is necessary uh, to be completed so that the other bondholders on your 2011 bonds are given notice that they will be paid off on June 1 of this year. Uh, so that's a, a requirement that's prescribed by the, uh, authorizing resolution of your prior bonds, that you would give them notice of redemption at least 30 days before the call date. Um, so that accomplishes that last. Those are both roll call votes, uh, when you get to them. So if there's not any other questions, I can either, uh, I can sign off or let's stay on until you get to the agenda item. Uh, either way is fine. If you, if you do kick me off and want me to leave, then, uh, Gail, if you could just send me a, an email regarding the time in which the resolution was approved.
Gail, do we need him?
I think I'm done.
Yeah, Gil's got it. If you wanna, we appreciate your time.
I'll email you, uh, the time, okay?
Yeah, thanks for, thanks for your flexibility tonight. I was multiple booked and so unfortunately it's 7:15 and I'm still in the office, so.
Attaboy.
Yeah, thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Yep, thanks.
Awesome.
Yeah, that was a wink.
That's good. All right, we're gonna jump back again. Sorry, we're going over the board here, but I'm gonna jump back to the, um, discussion of the open enrollment matrix. Uh, again, I kind of mentioned earlier, Christine, this is gonna be a, a topic that we're gonna spend some time on. Was really hoping to get into the weeds tonight, but with Christine being ill and working from home, I just didn't know if tonight was the night we really jumped into this. Uh, what I'm gonna recommend is maybe we add a work session in the next week to 10 days to really hit on this topic. Um, I still think we can discuss it tonight, a, a little bit here, but again, I, I don't think tonight is the best night to really dive into this deep and making decisions just with Christine not being here. It's kind of my recommendation. So with that, Christine, you have any quick thoughts? I know you got, if you, everyone looks at their documents, you'll see some options she threw out there. You'll see a, a possible maybe change to the matrix. Again, instead of asking a thousand questions, I would just prefer we push this back a little bit. Because it will take some time and I just don't know if Christine's gonna be up to it tonight.
And, um, let me just explain a couple of things of what you're looking at in your Dropbox. So the first, uh, matrix that you have is our current matrix today. Um, or maybe it's January something, but excuse me, you, it's our current matrix. Um, so when you see those negative numbers over to the right, um, it's, those are the number of spaces that are not available or available, however you want to look at it, under open enrollment. Um, so in some of the numbers you'll see, you know, in the high school, if you start there, some really high numbers. And that just says our high school is really full. Um, and so the next three or four tabs on the matrix, we just made a few adjustments, not a lot of adjustment because, um, you know, I know that there was a lot of thought and time and energy and the matrix has worked really well for us. So I don't want, I'm not recommending an overhaul of the matrix. Um, and I can get into a little bit of what that looks like, but you'll see across the bottom of those tabs, like if we decide to add a section of kindergarten only, or if we decided to, there's a two-seat padding on open enrollment in some of those grade levels. If we reduce that to a one seat, what that would do to our numbers. But I can show you that more specifically if we do a work session. And, uh, and give you that. And then I tried to type out what does it mean um, for options. And those are just some ideas, you know, option number one is we change nothing. That's, that's always an option. And just to give you context, I did not put this in your Dropbox, but as of Friday, I believe, we still had 38 students on our open enrollment list that, that since January 1, it's for next school year until March 1. And at the March 7th meeting, we'll have to make determinations about can, who gets to come in on that list? And then the final thing I want to say is that if you look at the bottom of those options, I'm also want to talk with all of you about the idea of prioritizing our, in, um, open enrollment, meaning that if you work for the school district, it's an idea that they have priority that their child could come with them. Um, and you can see that if you look at the bottom of that option list, it is something that is done not in every district, but in some districts, but it's a nice perk uh, for families. Uh, if you live here or if you work here, you get to bring your child with you. Um, and so, so those are some things to consider. I feel like we do need a deeper dive on that um, and could talk more extensively about what's best for Gilbert and what that looks like. Um, and try to balance all the important decisions.
And again, there's a lot to kind of absorb here and discuss and, um, you know, obviously there, we've, we're talking about policy here. So back to the comments before about priority of filling open slots, that would be a policy change. We had to discuss, uh, and so I guess what I'm
Correct.
Asking again, Amy, let, let's maybe table this until we can do a deep dive. Everybody, I would, what I would recommend is go through those matrices that, um, Dr. Trujillo threw out there, go through some options and then maybe I would highly recommend reviewing the current open enrollment policy that we have in place. And again, at the end of the meeting here today, I want to set a date where we really deep dive into this. We're all at the same table. We're discussing it. Make sure, I would, I want to make sure Tyler's here. Christine's here. All of us are here. We really talked about this because that, to me, it's a very important topic that needs to be discussed. Thoughts, questions?
And there's a date that's gotta happen by.
Yeah, we gotta move quick on this. Yeah, I was kind of hoping to do it tonight, but I just don't feel tonight is the night to really dive into it. Thoughts on it, Alex?
Um, yeah, I agree that tonight's probably not the night. Like I mentioned to you earlier, I am gone all next week, I have to stay. I mean, I'll be back the 28th.
Josh, what's your thoughts?
I think this is a big deal. It needs to be a total meeting.
I agree.
I agree. All right, let's just kind of push that aside then. No action we taking tonight on that. Um, everybody kind of, I said, do, do a little bit of homework. A little bit here, we'll talk about dates. Alex, if it, we can't get to work, we can't, if we had to call in even, if you could. But again, I, I would just, I see we have to push this off and, and we'll discuss it here later. All right, next item, authorize district's administration to submit a request to the school budget review committee in the amount of $6,304.52 for administration costs for Grand Wood for the 2022-2023 program year as approved by the Gilbert CSD School Board.
So what this is, is we sent two students, uh, special ed students to Grand Wood. And so this gives us the ability of, um, the possibility of taxing and getting some of the money back for the administrative costs for those students attending Grand Wood. So we just request the SBRC and the $6,000 is paid up by not the taxes, but, and that's what we asked.
We have a motion to approve.
So moved.
We have a second. Second, Josh? Further discussion? All those in favor? Opposed? Motion passed. All right, now the next three items are all have to do with the bonds and Travis kind of went through this a lot better than I can. So I'll do my best here. These are all going to be roll call votes. So I'll just let you all know that.
Which ones are these? F, G?
F, G and H.
Okay, I'll make a motion to, uh, do you have to have a motion on F?
Yes.
Okay, I'll make a motion as it's written, written, reading, reading, is that a new word?
To approve the sealed bid that we're open at one o'clock today.
Yep. Then we'll need a second.
Second.
And then a roll call, Josh?
Yep.
Tyler is absent. Alex?
Yep.
Jeff?
Yep.
And Andrew.
Yep. Next item, G is for the sale of our current bonds, so $8,115,000.
Again, I'll make a motion as it's written.
Second.
Roll call?
Josh?
Yep.
Tyler's absent. Alex?
Yes.
Jeff?
Yep.
And Andrew.
Yep. Last item, Jeff, you gonna keep rolling with this?
Yep, yep, same thing. I'll make a motion. Second.
Josh, was that?
Yep.
Roll call, Josh?
Yes.
Tyler's absent. Alex?
Yes.
Jeff?
Yep.
And Andrew.
Yep. All right, you'll email Travis on that. Great, great news.
7:24.
7:24. Okay, Gail, you have a quick financial update?
Um, so just a few things, um, on the financials is, uh, the overall, our revenues are a little bit lagging, but what that mainly is, is the tuitions are coming in and and being recorded in February and not so much in January. And, um, our expenditures are well under track, but we have had this discussion before and we added some personnel, so we'll level that out as we go forward. Uh, the other thing is just an FYI that, um, we billed $744,000 worth of tuition um, for first semester, um, the 17th. So that money will be coming in the next February and March, probably all February. And then we'll bill again, um, it'll, by July 15th, we have to have the second semester bill. And so it will be at least this much, if not a little bit more, because for special ed, we build the actual cost for the students. And so that is usually level one and level two and level three students are more. We build the districts where the parents live. And so then they're responsible to pay for the actual cost of that student. So we track the, the, um, the expenses for associates for that student. It's tracked all the way through and then we're billed, we fill. And, um, so I wanted to point that out. Otherwise, I don't have a lot on the administration or on the financials. I did want to talk about the budget more so, because I'm working on that. And then I noticed I have a typo. So as I'm getting started, here's a summary. This should actually say 17.11. And I did a side by side. The current SSA is estimated 2.5, which is the governor's recommendation. But that could change. That is not final yet. And so I wanted to talk about, this is just a draft. And I do use our long-range planning to do the budget. And the biggest change on here, and I wanted to point it out, is the management. And the management, we show an increase, well, that's not my work, is from 1.09, which was $700,000 for the current year. And we're estimating a million for the budget year. And why, and management funds, I should back up. Management funds can only be used for district liability insurance. We are self-insured for unemployment. And then early retirement. So I wanted to just basically remind you of why that is included in this draft. Is because if you look down on this page here, the management, the current year was 700. And what our plans are to level out our total levy because of our ability for cash. We can't, cash reserve, we don't have the capability of the calculation is not in our favor to levy for cash reserve as much as we should or would like to, I guess, I should say. So what our plans are in the long-range plan, we have modeled out that current year, 700. We would do a million for the next, and then we drop it to four. And then not have anything for 25. And then bringing it back to 26 and 27. Because the, what we anticipate is that we'll be able to tax for cash reserve in 24 and 25. And we will want to lower the tax rate from the management to balance that out. And so that's what we've modeled in our long-range plan. And so that is what I'm modeling in this draft. And so overall.
Go back to that top of the second page, wait. Okay, right there. Go ahead, I'll listen.
The management?
No, 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 upload. I want to look, yeah, right there. I want to look at the tax rate.
Yep, so we estimated for this year was going to be 17.21. But it's actually, right now, I have it estimated at 17.11. We're a tenth of a difference. And this model, the long range, is basically estimates. And the budget file is a live file. So it has a little bit of more live figures in it. But we're just a 10% off right now of what are the estimated, estimated.
Yeah, but we've set the solvency ratio, right?
The solvency is actually a calculation of your unspent and your expenses. It's calculated at the end of the fiscal year. We estimate where we want it to be based on our revenue and our expenditures for the future.
What did we estimate this year? Was more than 10.7.
Right, 16.2.
And it doesn't hurt us if we don't make it?
This is a real number, or 16.2 is an estimate.
Right.
And then, well, all of these are estimates, actually, solvency. But we want a range. We want a range between the perfect range that we, for a bullet point goal, is 10 to 15 is the perfect range. And we have, we have a target of 12.
Right.
And so we know because of our expenditures, we're going to spend down some of our cash on, cash on hand and our balance on hand the next two years. We're going to spend that down a little bit. So in turn, that is going to drop our solvency ratio short term for two years. And then we're building it back up again. Because these two years, we're going to have additional expenses for additional staffing and what we've added into our scenario.
Yeah, remember, '24 is probably the year we're going to go start looking to build another school. And our solvency ratio is not going to be very good. We're going to, we're not going to get good bond ratings then. It could affect our bond rating. So we might want to look at that.
But we do share, we, we share this, like this was shared with SMP when we, when we received our. So they, they get this document. And, but anyway, yeah, if we want to, we would have to cut out our expenditures.
Yeah.
10% is still good, though. I mean, it's.
10 to 15 is the range. And our goal is, our target is 12.
Do you want to spend too?
Yeah, yeah, I get, I get that, but.
We have to spend down some of our, our cash.
Right, I'm, I'm, I get, I get all that. And we should spend it on those kids. That's what we, we, we're not a, we're not a entity that should make money. I get that.
Right. So if you go back here, that, and I, I'm talking about cash reserve earlier. And because of our, it's a calculation and our expenditures, and we have a really healthy ending fund balance, it's affected our ability to tax for cash on, to cash reserve. And so as you can see up here, last, the current year we're in, we were able to have a cash reserve of 477, which was the max. But next year, it drops to 213. So we really need to get back to having the ability for cash reserve. And the only way we can do that is by spending down. And that's what we've, that's what we've estimated it out for our long-range planning to do that. So overall, general fund, and this is, this will change if the 2.5% SSA changes. But this is the first draft that I'm working on. And I wanted to bring it to you to see if it was, if I'm way off. And the only thing, the major difference is the cash reserve and the, and the management fund. It's the two big differences. And then I wanted to include just a side by side of last year to this year, just to dive in deep if you wanted to get more information about all the letters. But I'll be working on this. We will have a budget hearing on April, at the April meeting. It's on April 11 or something like that?
Yep, April 11.
And then it has to be approved into the, it has to, has to be approved by April 11. So hopefully, the SSA rate will be set real soon. And then we can finalize the budget and move forward on that. So right now, we have, it's showing a drop in our levy by a tax.
Questions, comments?
Gail, is there any chance you can get for the next meeting? How much are rate of taxes for Story County versus the other counties around? That's something you have?
A tax rate?
Like our taxable rate, like that guy, who was it? John Kinley said our, our taxes are high here. What does that mean? What's, what's the rates around this?
Oh, for other schools, sure.
Yeah.
That's a comparison.
Yeah.
You want it as compared to our, our conference? You want to compare it to like?
I want to compare, I don't, I want to compare. I, I don't think we're that. I don't think we're that bad, because I remember.
The last person ever to say our taxes are low.
That'd be nobody else.
I think, the goal of the, since I've been here, the goal is to keep our levy steady.
Yep.
Right.
No, you know, and so that was, and then to basically, and then to maximize our four or five to manage our debt and pay off that. So, but yeah, I can, I can do that for sure.
Thank you.
Thank you, Gail. Any other questions for Gail? We'll be seeing that budget a lot here the next couple of months. All right, consent agenda, it'd be polled or discussed?
Seeing none, so moved.
Second?
Second.
Alex in the second, further discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Consent agenda pass? All right, to the calendar quick. Again, I mentioned this earlier, but like to do a work session next week if possible. Alex, you said you were not going to be around. Could you do a Zoom or a call in?
Zoom would probably work for me, yeah.
Could you do Monday, like, by, like, 5 o'clock? I already know you're out of town. You're always out of town. Yeah. 5:00 am?
I think I might be here.
Really?
Yeah.
All right, what about, I know Tyler told me he would, he would be available. I already texted him earlier today.
Oh, you look.
Josh? You said anybody have CPR?
I'm good from 5 to 5:45, if I can find, so I, I can probably have someone else.
Well, that's, that's, we're going to hit on it pretty early in heading.
Yeah.
I would say before your live answer, we go to, what I may do then, if, if we decide to bring, if Patrick comes to and gets a little deeper, I might push that to later and just hit the open enrollment first. Because that's really where most of the.
Yeah, but anybody talk at those meetings?
They, no.
This is just going to be a work session.
Oh, I know, but there's, but you're going to post it, right?
Oh, yeah, we have to. I was just getting a clarification, because if there's no action, it will be definitely just a work session. So, no action, just a work.
I don't think it'll be action, because I said, when do we have to have all the action that's done by the open enrollment? We, we can push, yeah, so we can do it in February. Well, it has to, so it has to be this meeting.
Yeah, it's going to be.
So we may have to do, but we may, there may be an action item in there.
Well, the, the open enrollment applications are due by March 1. So we wouldn't take action on those applications until the March 7 meeting. So you could take action on the decisions or the recommendations in the work session meeting. And then vote on the matrix or the decisions in the 7th. And then that would impact the decisions for the open enrollment applications.
I kind of like to just move, if we, I think the earlier the better. If we're there talking about, I'd like to just make a decision that night, get it done. I mean, so that way people would know too.
Yeah.
So I guess.
And that doesn't mean, at least if it's on the agenda.
Yeah.
It doesn't mean you have to.
I agree.
But you have discussion with possible action, and then you've got some flexibility.
I agree. I like to have the flexibility, if we come up with it, I mean, we're going to spend that much time to do it that night. I say let's just, let's make some changes if we have to, or not make changes and be done with it.
Yep.
Okay, so 5 o'clock. Christine, how does that work for you? 5 o'clock next Monday?
Works just fine.
You still going to be sick?
No, I'm going to be healthy as you can imagine next Monday.
Oh, get feeling better. Take care of yourself and get some rest.
I will, thank you.
Anything else? Do you have a motion to adjourn? Give a second.
Yes, yes, yes.
Jeff's the second. All those in favor?
Aye.
All opposed, all right? Meeting adjourned.